Okay, welcome everybody to the Shelburne Planning Commission on June 27th. And calling this to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Andrew, seconded by Megan. Okay, so any discussion?
We're gonna move around minutes and...
Yeah, I feel like I'm asking myself the question because I said I was gonna do that. So I was thinking that we should move the minutes to the end. I'm gonna propose to move that right before other business and target roughly an 8:45 time. Mostly because a quorum of people necessary to approve the minutes. We need Kate, who might be having some trouble with parking. And Stephen wasn't at the last one, so we can't actually approve it without her. So any other suggestions or anything?
Are you gonna put the energy piece there?
That's just gonna be under other business. Okay, all in favor of the agenda with that modification?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item, are there any disclosures relating to anything on the agenda tonight around conflicts of interest? Seeing none. Next up is open to the public. Got a packed house, so nothing there. Okay, so moving on to zoning matters. And I suspect that this is gonna be something that will take at least two meetings. But we're gonna try and go through the changes to form-based zoning based on what Brandy Saxton had put together. The planning commission did a lot of work around this, but then we put it aside so that we could focus on the town plan. So some of these documents are coming from, well, the draft that we were working through was from the end of December 2017. So our main objective here is to go through and accept the changes that she put the work into. We'll discuss first and see if we need to tweak anything or add anything. But our main purpose is not to overhaul or really try to dig in and get into long discussions. It's more to clarify what she had had, and if there's anything that seems out of whack, make those corrections so that we could get that package approved, have our hearing, get it to the select board, and then in the meantime, we can do a deeper dive on form-based zoning with some more detailed discussions. But there is a lot of material, so it is gonna take some time. So with that, just...
I can suggest the first edit.
Please.
And that is, in reference to the 2014 town plan, we should definitely change that to 2019?
Number 72.
Yeah.
And then something else I've mentioned once before. When Brandy did her edits, she had worked on the version of the form-based zoning that was the primary document. But after the first version was adopted, there was a paragraph added when the town adopted the regulations on adult entertainment uses. So the official version of form-based zoning, although not the document that Brandy was working with, and it only has this one difference, is a paragraph on adult entertainment uses. So on the first page, under 2200.2 applicability, that's where that is in the current document. And I would imagine that a .2F could be added that would be, it simply says, "Adult entertainment uses. Provisions and requirements of the overlay district shall be superseded by the provisions of the adult entertainment as a conditional use in the Shelburne zoning regs." It's basically a paragraph that the attorneys thought would be a good safety measure so that no one attempted to circumvent the adult entertainment regs in the base zoning by going through form-based zoning. And I will circulate that.
Yeah, and the language would... Go ahead.
It would go up front?
Yeah, it would go with the, just with the head of severability. So it would be 2200.2F.
And that language would match, would reflect what's in the regs or referred to?
Yes.
Yeah. And as far as, I just wanna make sure that we're capturing these. As far as the actual changes that we would be making to the document, like the 2014 to 2019 town plan, is that something that...
It would be difficult to do digitally, but I could try to do that annotations or, but I can keep a master or you wanna...
Yeah, I didn't intend to make it real time. I just wanted to make sure that if there were changes...
Or Ian has the document as well, so she can be a backstop.
Right.
But...
Let's make it a different color. Okay.
And actually, I mean, I could itemize them in a document.
All right. So then with that, I suppose, so we have that, the 2200.2F. I don't have a lot of nitpicky things, but in 2200.3A, toward the end of that sentence, so under severability, the remainder of this article in the zoning bylaw will not be affected, and I would change but to and. Is that the right way to do that, or is there a reason for it to be but?
It's kind of boilerplate, but let me think.
This also just may be a personal thing where it's been beaten into my head, no buts, just...
It's like, it kinda makes sense if it says but instead will remain in full force, but if it's not but instead, that they will not be affected and will remain in full force. So I think I would defer to the person who's a teacher.
Well, I was just gonna say, as a teacher, I think it both, either form works, but it's just, you know, that's a little more of a legalese use of it, you know, like conversationally or, I don't know, if a middle schooler was writing me a paper, then I'm sure Ian would be more pickled, but that's off the top of my head. It feels like that's something you see in more official, it's like the whereas's for deck, right? Like whoever says whereas.
Yeah, exactly. That's fair.
And then Hanes?
No change.
Didn't you just call Jason's grammar middle school level?
I think so.
No, definitely not.
I mean, that's actually an improvement, so I'm happy. Thank you. All right, and...
Upper elementary.
So yeah, so then moving into 2201, I was curious about dot 1A2 on frontage zones. It indicates that we're focused on the three intersections at Martindale, Hookcrest, and Longmeadow, which it is, but this is something that we've talked about that that all could change. So is it best to just keep that there or add something to say, to indicate there may be...
I think that if you don't wanna change the document...
In that way.
In that way.
Yeah.
My note was for now.
Right, and it was that kind of thing, but you're right.
And that idea comes up again later.
So I have a question in that section and elsewhere, I think. They reference this 2200B, but I guess it was, yeah, it's this, this one, but I thought there was a couple of times, maybe I just misread it, but there are a couple of times where it referenced something, but I couldn't find where in 2200B it was referring to that necessarily. So I guess that's just the deregulating plan, is 2200B is the...
That's the regulating plan.
The master image that you look at regardless.
And the key parts of that are the character districts, the areas, and then some of these little dotted lines with numbers that have the distance. So those are a little less apparent, but you see the little circles with the 100 in them.
Right. Well, like, there's a reference in the height, so it's...
Yep, and those are underneath, right, it's part of the key.
Well, okay. Where?
Actually, I think it used to, but that's the...
Yeah, it just references, it says, "The minimum-maxim height requirements of principal building stores are specified in the regulated planning plan, figure 2200B. A half-story represents an attic story which may or not be habitable." But the min and max heights weren't, there's a build-to-zone.
Right, the heights actually came off the regulating plan, so that should be struck.
Okay. Cool. So, like, makes me feel better why I couldn't find it.
So would we just strike eight altogether?
Or to say height that a half-story represents an attic story. I mean, or that, no, we should say that the height is referenced in the building types.
Yeah. So the reference is specified in the building types could be substituted for regulating plan. It is under the heading regulating plan though, so if it's not in the regulating plan, people will find out about the heights later.
Yeah.
So maybe removing eight entirely is appropriate.
Can we point out where, 'cause I think I found it later.
Yeah, it would be on the chart.
Yeah, the heights are specified in the 2203D building types.
Could you just replace figure 2200B with chart, whatever, whichever one you just referenced?
Yeah, but to Dean's point, if it's not actually in the regulating plan, and that's what 2201 is referring to, then it would, yeah, but, 'cause it's also on, it's in 2203, basically, the entire...
It's a feature of the regulating plan.
And if there's, yeah, I would agree with just striking it.
So that says height, minimum and maximum height, like that whole panel?
The whole, yeah, all of .8.
So nine becomes eight?
Yeah.
And is the half-story part?
That's also addressed later.
It's addressed later, okay.
Anything else on that page?
Well, the other thing I had was on the conservation, where dedicated open spaces either publicly or privately owned is identified on the regulating plan. Related to the map cleanup we have, which had some issues with people seeing land as being conserved, what they were upset, you know, just, I don't know, that just sort of rang a bell in my head, like, okay, are we, do we have that covered?
Ooh, so on the regulating plan?
Does that impact this map?
Yeah, I don't think it impacts this map, because the areas that are shown as conservation in green are in fact conserved parcels, owned by TNC or by the town.
Yeah, we're right. Okay. Yeah, it's a good color. Okay.
No change.
No change. And then we have the overlay district itself. I didn't have any comments on that specifically. Did you have anything? On figure 2200A? And then we have the...
Not for this discussion, I have some questions maybe for the later discussion.
Right.
It's kind of expendable. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't do much other than give somebody some idea of why the regulating plan is the way it is, but it doesn't have any impact on its own.
Yeah, I think it's just an interesting thing for orientation and naming, but...
I think it's important to keep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then 2200B? I didn't have anything on that outside of the node concept and, I agree, it would be a future discussion. My only concern is if, for example, the project that's replacing the Champlain Lanes lot, if we have, that is one that we have called out as a, one of the nodes, right?
Yes, it is a node.
So if it's in here, then not having to conform to some of those things could be covered by 2207? I'm just trying to, the... These are the frontage zones, right?
Yeah, so if they stay in, and if you want to do something addressing the request from Tyler Scott, you'll have to do that in some other place, by waiver or changes to the build-to-zone or some other mechanism.
Right. Okay, because that, I mean, yeah, I guess when I was reading this, I was thinking that if that intersection itself is not going to be a node, and we're already talking about how we could accommodate them with that not being a...
So if, well, that, yeah, that goes back to this idea where it refers to those, you know, where I said for now.
Right.
If the commission is prepared to shorten the list from three to two...
I don't, well, it's not so much, I mean, I'm happy to do the for now, and we can work on that later, but if the later is going to be much later, and that project would be something that the town is interested in, then it wouldn't, like, we need to make changes to that particular area. But I suppose that could be handled through 2207, the waiver, somehow.
I have sort of a similar concern looking at this, and I don't wanna get ahead to the future discussion, but that if we pass this, put it through, and then get a slew of proposals that are gonna be contradictory to maybe what we will change, like, is there a way to, I don't know, put some sort of a, something out there or a hold on these nodes on this part of it? So we don't change things half, as things are halfway through?
Yeah, that's the only thing, I mean, they're there now, and anything that would lead to those being changed, such as economic development initiatives and that sort of thing, are far off in the future, and I wouldn't wanna take things out if they're gonna end up being in, 'cause, and we don't know for a fact that the Champlain Lanes is going to be that particular project at this time.
Okay.
So it depends on if we're looking at this as, we just wanna get the updated changes that Brandy put together to enable more flexibility, but it's not gonna solve all of the problems, then we keep it. But if we wanted to, if we recognize that that intersection is impractical based on that lot configuration to be one of those nodes, we could, we could take it out. I'm just, I'm a little hesitant because there theoretically could be a project that could develop that. I just, yeah. So how about we leave it in for now, and then we work around it through waivers, or maybe that puts a heavier impetus on the next discussion? 'Cause it sounded like they had some flexibility in their timeline as well.
I'd agree, yeah, that we'd leave it in for now.
For now. Okay.
I mean, I don't know if it's part of this discussion, but just looking at what Tyler Scott presented, there are ways to do that, in my opinion, that it could be done and still meet with a lot of this stuff. And he was kind of presenting it as, doesn't work here.
Yeah, not as a challenge to him, but I drove by it today, and I was just casually looking at it as I drove by, and the impression that I had after seeing the layouts that were proposed, it struck me as there are certainly ways, to me anyway, that it seems that it could, could work, perhaps not for that purpose, but, but it could work in that intersection. And I'd like to be, I'd like to retain some flexibility at least for what may or may not develop, so to speak, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, I guess just, I wasn't, it wasn't that particular project I was thinking, but if we're going to change the areas of where the nodes are, if a number of projects go through and are built, or too far along while we're in the process of changing them, then you can't go back. Once, once you break ground, once you put up a building, you're not gonna change it. So it was just something I was thinking, looking at all this, like, if we approve it and go forward, and then it takes us a couple of months, and we change things dramatically, if permits go through, we might have the same flexibility.
It's kind of the interesting thing, though, because I think what they were looking for was some latitude in being able to not have to adhere strictly to some of these rules, but it wouldn't preclude that intersection from becoming a node, especially if that's going to be a housing community.
So if someone files an application under the way it is now, they can continue. The fact that the map changed later doesn't take away their, the right to do their project under the map that they applied under.
Right.
So they can, and on the other hand, if, if the map changed in a way that was favorable, and they wanted to redesign, they could always submit again under the new regs because they found them more favorable. So someone who applies and gets an approval under, has the option. We just can't, we can't come along later and tell somebody who got in the door, you can't go through under the old regs. They are entitled to.
Right, and that, that's what I'm wondering about, if that's a problem.
If it's a problem when they do something that we don't want to see?
If we make changes...
Yeah.
That would say, we don't want this type of building, like, we talked about maybe view corridors or other things focusing, and so if we get things through, you can't stop them once they're started, and it changes the view a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, I used to live in DC, and so reading a lot of this, I pictured, I lived in DC and then just outside, and there are corridors where it's these kind, all the buildings have a very similar style, and they're all right on the road, and they're a very different feel than I feel in Shelburne. And so I'm sort of picturing, like, these go up, can't take them down once they're up. And it seemed like from some of the discussions, we were talking about changing some of that. So if it goes, if it takes us too long to change it, and you have buildings go up, and I know we're not, like, building a day around here, so maybe that's not a concern, but that was something that sort of rang a bell as I was reading all of this. So something maybe to think about as we're looking at this, if others have that, maybe it's just my, my experience living in places like that, it was not the kind of entrance I would think matches was laid out in the town plan, that sort of thing.
In terms of, and to explain this a little bit, in terms of what the building type would be around there in the frontage and the setbacks and that sort of thing, like, as opposed to...
Well, and the number of buildings, like, looking at, it changes, like, I don't know if we've ever, if anyone's looked at sort of a view or done a rendering of, as you're driving down the street, this is what it looks like.
Right.
And I certainly haven't done that, but that's a lot. This, what is it, 2200A, that's a lot of new buildings in that stretch, which will dramatically change how it looks. And so if we're thinking of changing that part, we'd wanna do it before too many buildings went up.
Oh, certainly.
And so that, that's why I was just saying, like, if we're gonna be spending a long time on this, is there a way to put sort of a, a hold or an interest for future applications on using this in parts of it?
Well, and this is specific to the nodes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or are you thinking, Megan, maybe to, like, fast-track certain updates to certain nodes?
Maybe fast-track our discussions on it, or, yeah, I'm not sure how it works in terms of this piece of it. I mean, I'm new to the planning world, but you were saying last time that you were getting more and more interest in this, and I was just thinking, like, if we get too many...
People are realizing how much more density you can get. That's, I think, motivating a lot of people.
Yeah.
So we are seeing more applications.
One of my worries with this is that if we get too much building here instead of the town center, that the town center loses its priority as the economic center of town. And it's not that you don't want business development here, but we have empty storefronts in the town, and if this is the place that's easier to develop, we're gonna have more stuff going up, and it's going to be not the order that I think would be beneficial to the, what's sort of laid out for the town.
You know, it's a classic situation, right? You see that happen all over the place, like, we went out to Montana to see my wife's family this summer, Great Falls, Montana, downtown, just, like, emptied out, and there's kind of a strip outside of town where everything went.
Yeah, and we have such a nice town center. And it's not to say that the ideas behind this, the ideas behind this are still what the town wants, I just wanna make sure that the buildings that go up are benefiting the town in the way that the town wants them to.
I guess the other way to look at it, the other way I look at it here, is these nodes, these areas up here become not a second town center, but like little miniature town centers, right?
Yeah.
So for all the residents that are there, that can't walk into downtown, that becomes potentially the place where more things can happen.
Yeah.
So it makes more areas of town, you know, bike-friendly, walk-friendly, denser, affordable housing, et cetera.
This is the corridor itself, the village is, doesn't fall under form-based currently, but does have, I mean, all of the core infrastructure around town is in the village, like the municipal offices, the library, the market space and that kind of thing. So that, I mean, that would retain the core from a civic perspective, but you're right. I mean, lots of things could happen theoretically.
And I think the idea of building up for those neighborhoods is great, I just wanna make sure it's not done at the expense of the town center, which, maybe there are more documents in the town center that I just haven't read yet, but looking at this, I'd see if I were a business, I would go to, out there rather than building my restaurant in town. That's my worry.
Which entirely could be, and you're just, you're dealing with different neighborhoods and populations. Like, the village itself, the way our general plan is, is to concentrate, concentrate density in the village. This is certainly opening up density to the corridor, but that also makes a lot of practical sense from a public transit and proximity to Burlington and those sorts of things. But you're right. I mean, even with the examples that we have right now, off Martindale Road with Tyler Scott's proposal that they're working on, that would be, what, that's a retirement community that would be there. And if the...
Tyler Scott, I don't know that it's age-restricted.
Or, oh, is it not?
It's low income.
Affordable housing.
CHT's projects are typically affordable projects. The age-restricted project is Yankee Doodle.
Ah, okay.
That one, two of those three buildings will be 55 over.
Right. And then that kind of gets into why, why I'm interested in the economic development aspects of things, because that really does drive what goes into places. From our perspective now, we can just, we can put together what we want things to generally look like and how things flow, but that, that CHT project for affordable housing, I mean, that could have easily been a store on the ground floor and apartments up top or industrial space or whatever else could go into that area. So we're always gonna be at the mercy of whatever project comes in and who owns the land and, or who purchases it. Yeah, I'm just more concerned with if, if, if we do end up saying that that is not going to be a node area because the, hypothetically speaking, let's say the boat exchange, that they're in it for life, and the liquor store across the street from that, like, they're just never gonna, that is that intersection, right? That if there is never gonna change, then, I mean, that node isn't gonna just magically build up overnight anyway. But we don't know the answers to those questions. So there is some element of cart leading the horse. This was all based on all of the work that went in in 2014 that the town did to come up with what the public wanted, and of course, the minds of the public changes, so...
I'm sorry, I'm sidetracking us, but I just wanted to put that out there.
It's good to talk about that, though, 'cause I'm, yeah, one of my thoughts, especially seeing that building with the Moscoma Bank in South Burlington that just recently went up, initially thinking of that going down Route 7 on both sides just didn't appeal to me at all. But as I was getting into this a little bit more deeper and the pieces were fitting together a little bit better mentally, there are options for different building character types and that sort of thing, which would break that up. And there are the provisions for not having buildings be exactly the same and all of that, so it wouldn't be that cookie cutter type thing. But we are also at the mercy of the ideas that come in, right?
I think the point about, you know, this not being a node is a really good one, because, you know, it's so close to another node, just a block away from the next node. So it seems like it makes sense to me to take out this as a, as a frontage zone, a neighborhood center frontage zone.
Well, and the other consideration is that, is really how we wanna pursue this, because if we were to take that out, this is becoming less of a, let's go through and review and adopt Brandy's changes, because if we start changing this type of map, I mean, it's a, it's a, what's involved with the change kind of thing. I don't know if that's a big deal.
It's not difficult to do a new map with that red area gone. That's not the difficult part. The difficult part, I think, is, is just making sure that there's nothing unforeseen about it. But I don't think that it's actually that big a deal if we shorten the list from three to two as far as making edits to the regs. It's implication of it on the ground is the significant thing, which is just, there was a vision, one vision one way, and now the vision is a different vision.
Yeah, I think the other thing that I have in mind is also not trying, trying to avoid opening up bigger cans of worms that would prevent this from actually just being approved, that could help other projects that are looking at coming through, 'cause this is basically a cleanup from Brandy. Because this was basically a cleanup from Brandy. I don't have, I wouldn't have a problem necessarily removing it based on the previous discussion that we had. I just also wouldn't want people that were heavily involved in putting this together and whatever reasoning went in behind where these were put in to come out and say, "Okay, you can't do that." And, or, not that you can't. I mean, we could if everybody agrees and there's support for it. But I suppose I'm good either way. I'm just leery of what problems could crop up or who might complain.
Well, if, I mean, if we want to change it, when would be the time to change it if not now? I mean, not, if not during this revision right now? Is there another time when we would open this up? You know, probably not, I'm thinking.
Yeah, it's, it's mostly...
For a while, anyway.
And that was partially why I mentioned it in the first place. Because based on the presentation that we saw and understanding what that lot looks like and what can be done with it, it doesn't seem to make sense to me to have that be a node. So my personal perspective is, I don't think, I mean, I don't believe that needs to be a node. But I also don't want to make a decision without really understanding why was that initially thought to be a node in the first place? What to the owners of the boat exchange and the liquor store? Like, what are their plans? Are they, are the owners of those properties open to future development and having that be a node? Because if they are, that'd be one side of the street. You know, that, it wouldn't be a bad thing necessarily. If they're not, it would make sense to me just to take it out.
Kate, what was the thinking on that, to making, to making that a node?
Um, well, this was, this was done, first of all, with a lot of input from the neighbors in, in those neighborhoods on either side. And they wanted places that they could walk to. And, and so, yeah, so again, at the time, there was a different sort of reality about, you know, retail with housing above was, or offices above, was something that was more realistic at the time. And so that's changed. And, you know, I think the node is, one of the things that it suggests is that the buildings are going to be in a kind of interrelationship with each other in this area. And I think that is probably not going to materialize in the ways that we thought. So I would not have a problem with removing the requirement for a frontage, the frontage zones in those, I think you're looking at the northernmost one? Is that what everybody's looking at at the moment? And just because I don't think that that is, is probably, demand for that is probably going to materialize in that location. And if the, that would not prevent the owner of the market from individually sort of ramping up development on that site. It just would, would reduce the expectation that this would be in some kind of interrelationship with other, things going on on other sites that would be similar. Do you see what I mean? If that's, if the, if what we're getting is evidence that that's not what the market supports. So if that made some sense. So, but yes, in terms of the larger question of like, why these specific areas, they just seemed places that had the potential to naturally evolve into something. There was something going on already. So it wasn't, we didn't, we weren't picking them arbitrarily. But because there seemed like there was something going on. And the grocery store market is sort of in its own little area because it's far enough away from the other places. If that helps explain it. But it seems like, you know, what's happening in, in terms of just what's going on in sort of real life, there's demand is actually happening at kind of the two bookends of the village, which are, which is exactly what we, what we, I would think, what I want. And I think supports your interest in, in having development more related to the village and what goes on there. So it's, it's kind of exporting what, what has been happening in the village out a little bit, which I think is great. Because that was another big goal was, you know, there's two ways to look at this. You can, you know, you can have, treat the village as this kind of historic place where nothing can ever change. And it basically has a kind of moat around it. And then, you know, to hell with what happens outside, which is sort of like the, you know, what the conventional approach is. Or you can, you can say, "No, we're going to encourage infill in the village and the village to be a place that can evolve into something over time, like urban places always have in our history. And we're going to try and do what, another thing that urban places have always done throughout human history, 6,000 years' worth of urban places, which is gradually expand outward." And so that's really what, one of the goals, was to try and, and put that, that possibility in place. So it seems like with the Healthy Living application and some of the other things that are going on, that that is kind of starting to happen in this one spot. And then, of course, it's happening south of the village with, you know, the Shelburne Green area, too. So, but I, you know, I don't know, you raise a good point. I mean, how real is it? Maybe it's too much to have kind of, you know, two, one large node and one smaller node on the north end. You know, maybe, maybe we can refine that a little bit.
And then the main difference is how close it would be to the street, right? And the build-to occupancy percentage might be different.
That much of it, yeah, the percentage. Occupancy, if we make it an orange, it goes down to 50%. Whereas if it's a center frontage, it's on a 75%. But the setback from the, the build-two zone is not that much different. It goes from five to 30, up to 10 to 50.
More of a wall, more of the sense of enclosure, not the location.
Yeah. On the extreme side?
On the extreme side, yeah.
To do it right now.
Right.
Except for waivers for the existing proposal? I, yeah.
You mean, not a lot of interest in having it?
In building there right now?
Or having it, having it that close to the road? It sounded like Tyler Scott was interested in pulling it back off the road, just as an example.
Well, for, for housing, he made the point of the noise and everything else being that close. And so if you have it be primarily housing, you're potentially lowering the quality of life for the inhabitants by forcing it too close to the road. And he was saying the tire noise and everything else.
I mean, I think some of the vision for the nodes was that it would be commercial. And you might have residential above, but it was less an emphasis on residential right at the street than mixed use or maybe primarily non-residential on the street. They happen to want to do a residential project. And so their, their program is not terribly compatible with an area, but the land is there. And it has, under Form B zoning, it has much higher development potential than under conventional. If they had the same number of units under conventional, you could be sure that they would be applying under conventional. But the conflict between residential and the location on the street is because they want to do residential in an area that the regulating plan was thinking would be mixed use or more commercial.
Well, perhaps the solution is to allow more flexibility. So you're not precluding this from maybe developing as a node at some point in the future. But you're also allowing something that is more supported by the market, which, you know, this, this was an attempt to really capture market demand. Because, you know, we have this, it's very difficult to get these aging sprawl corridors to revitalize. And, you know, even in the kind of shape that it's in right now, if you look at the, our grand list, this is actually a really pretty high-performing part of our town. And it could be, you know, more high-performing. The most high-performing on a per-acre basis actually is the village. Maybe the Shelburne Green areas might be beginning to kind of rival that, that commerce and industry south. Looked at it recently. But, you know, what had been happening was there, people were just sort of walking away from these properties and then developing greenfields, you know? And we were looking at, like, that's just going to come all the way to the village. I mean, that's kind of, you know, we were incentivizing that. So, so we wanted to try and come up with something that would perhaps encourage, you know, more urban uses selectively in spots. And then the bottom fell out of the retail market, on which everything was predicated. So...
And at the same time, we have the, the CHT potential project going there. But again, I think if we look at those frontage numbers, you're talking about a, on the close-to-the-road side, you're talking about a difference of five feet. On the, how far back it goes, you're, it's a difference of 20 feet. And then you have the build-two-zone occupancy, which could shift the building around. But that lot is so strange, there's not a whole lot of flexibility as we saw from the multiple options that they gave us. So partially from, from my perspective, I still feel like there is flexibility. But if, so if we were to leave it in there, it would, let's say a CHT project does go in there, there's additional housing, maybe that sparks something for the, the boat exchange or the Route 7 liquors to want to do something with that property because recognizing the residents around? I suppose I could go either way. I feel like at this point, removing it, it seems like it makes sense. But I'm also not trying to get us hung up on something that's going to preclude this amendment package from going forward. I don't know that that would hold it up.
I think we could make it, so...
I mean, yeah, we certainly could. If there are strong feelings, I do not have strong feelings. And I imagine that the public will let us know what they think once this package starts coming together a bit more. So if we wanted to take it out and see what people think, we could do that.
I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think my concern is more the overall picture there than just that one particular node, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it'd be an interesting discussion to have. I think some of the points you were raising about not wanting to take away from, like, wanting development to, you mentioned empty businesses in the village or empty storefronts, or that potentially being a problem? Or is that an issue now that you see?
So here's another thing to look at, right?
There are...
Like, in the village?
Right?
Yeah.
There's the one next to the country store. And the Chef Kanto's just left. And there's a rundown building that I think was bought by someone. Yeah. It's just more, I guess, my vision of it in reading the town plan was, if you strengthen the core, then it grows out and the core stays strong. Whereas if you build on the outside, then it's harder to strengthen the core. Like, when we moved here, I wondered why there were new businesses popping up when there was an empty store in town. And thinking that, in town. But, and I, I've learned since living here, these neighborhoods, and it makes sense to try to connect them. And it's not at all that I'm against that idea.
Closer to South Burlington and Burlington up there, so you might actually have more people drawing. But the other thing, I was just going to add one thing, which is, the village is there right about here, right? It's about three-quarters of a mile, if I'm looking this thing right to this node. And it's about the same distance into this next node. So there's something about kind of, on a human scale, that's about a 15-minute walk, you know? I don't know how fast people walk, 12 to 15-minute walk, right? So those are, that's probably the outer edge at which people would want to walk from one place to the other. But anybody halfway between these, you know, like, it's kind of a nice spacing. If you got the village, you got this potentially growing area here. And then roughly through Corozomile, you've got this one that we still think makes a lot more sense because there's more stuff there. Limiting that one, I mean, otherwise, the other thing is, this just becomes one giant note, right? Because you're, I mean, you're talking about...
It becomes a strip more than...
It's only like 500 feet apart.
Yeah.
Legacy, I mean, I brought it up again because I was wondering if we should remove it. But at the same time, I, this is good for me because I have been thinking about this stuff and I want to make sure that I've, I've got perspective as well. And if we're talking about empty business next to the country store, that's the Kanto's property, right?
Well, there's one of those.
So David Webster's... The pump house.
And those are smaller than what we're talking about over here. Like, they would be different kinds of uses, wouldn't, would they not? I mean, to some degree, I would just say, do we want to say, "Okay, we're going to ignore the corridor and not want to focus anything there until everything in the village is full?" Because businesses in the village could close and space opens up. Like, I feel like we're trying to encourage all of this to be not empty storefronts. And to some degree, letting the market work itself out, but within the framework that we're defining, that the town wants itself to, to be. I'm just having a hard time connecting those dots, but...
And I don't have an answer to it. It's just when I was looking at it, it's, again, not that I disagree with the goals here, but I thought as businesses are coming in, we're providing incentives to go here. You can do increased density, increased numbers, where I feel like our core isn't as strong. And so I don't know what the answer is to that. It's just, a lot of things go up.
And, and market share that is, is interested in going in a place like the village versus out in, in the corridor.
That's what I'm trying to reconcile, yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's kind of an apples and oranges sort of thing. So what we're just trying to do is evolve this away from something that is, has, you know, been, the presumption is completely car-dependent, you know? And the, and that has really created quality of life issues for the people who live on those, in those neighborhoods, which have no connectivity whatsoever. I mean, even to each other, it's, it's a little bit, you know, tortured. So, and there's no, there's no bike path or anything. You know, there's no sort of Thai Hall North version kind of thing. And so the only option for them is to go out on Route 7. And it's just, you know, this kind of sprawl, commercial, aging strip hell, you know? So, you know, which is not, not what, what they wanted. They wanted things to evolve into something that would be more desirable to live near.
Which makes sense.
So, you know, it's a tough one. I mean, you know, we're, we're in the position of having to deal with existing patterns of development that, you know, are problematic. But, you know, what, what do you do? You know, do you just, just say, "Well, you know, we don't approve of that" and, you know, turn your back on it and walk away? Or, you know, do you try and, and kindle some kind of, you know, reinvestment and reuse in that? And make those places worthy of someone's investment and attention? Because, you know, otherwise, the alternative is, is, you know, they go to a greenfield someplace. And, which is, is not, you know, sustainable.
Well, what we're proposing here, though, in that Martindale intersection, would be to, I mean, I suppose you could build around, but effectively, you'd need to raise the two buildings that are currently there on the other side of that intersection if you wanted to have that vision come to fruition of it being a node with buildings up against Route 7. You wouldn't be able to have those existing buildings there. I don't believe.
Right. Those would be redeveloped.
Yeah.
Maybe the boat one could stay.
And have something in front of it and keep that in the bank?
Yeah, well, the node, the idea of the node there was an idea that that is what those places could evolve to. And it was, the assumption was at the time that the market, there would be market demand that would materialize to support that. And that is what has, has fallen through. That's, that's the big factor, that, that's no longer there. So I think it's interesting that what we're getting is interest in having housing here. But housing, I completely agree, housing right up against the street would be very unappealing in that context. So that's why I think we should just be, you know, more flexible about what can be, can be done. So that, you know, I mean, I don't have any problem with keeping it as a potential node, sort of to capture all aspects of the demand as it might emerge in the future. We don't know what that's going to be. Or we could take it out. I, I'm kind of ambivalent.
Yeah, it will, and as we saw, that lot specifically on the... Yeah, it, well, and, as we saw, that lot specifically on the west side is just really goofy. Like, it, it would be, it would make sense in certain applications, but that's not what's being discussed, and they can still do the setback. I think there were other things that they were concerned with, with needing to have, I think it, I think it came down to the, the occupancy percentage, where a certain percentage of the buildings had to be, like, on either side of Martindale, and that became impractical. Trying to remember the details of that right now.
Yeah. It does have to do with, some of what they could do conceivably is create lots, and then they're working within the areas of the lots, but there are things working...
But then that gets into a subdivision thing, and...
So, one of the other things that, that might be of significance, maybe, maybe not, maybe, is that before this was, when this was, this framework was created, the, the mobile home park that was there was, was something that, you know, had, the fate, the ultimate fate of that had not been determined. And now, you know, that has. And so that's going to remain housing. So that's become a much more permanent, concrete thing. I think, great, I'm very happy for those folks. And that sort of casts a whole new light on the use of the adjacent lot, you know? So, so, it'd be kind of nice to sort of bake in some of this flexibility, so that the, we could have a form-based code that is more responsive to conditions that present themselves, not just the sort of, you know, ideal version that, you know, we and the consultants sort of imagined.
How do we do that? I mean, how do we bake in the flexi... And this, I mean, this is meant to provide the flexibility from the existing zoning regs.
Well, that...
How do we bake in more flexibility?
That, that might be to...
Instead of losing it.
To, to not, so right now, we don't have a, a type that would allow the, what, what it is that the Champlain Housing Trust wants to do, and have the flexibility of locating it where they would prefer to on the site, right? That's, that's the, our, one of the dilemmas about this project.
I think the question is location. They, they, it's easier for them to do what they want if they're not pulled so close, because of where the access has to be in the center of the lot.
Right, right. And, but also, the, the code didn't anticipate something like a standalone apartment-type building in that particular location.
Ah, the illustrating plan, no. It was, you know, as you can see, and the reason I pulled that up was, a little building that would be on the northwest corner, and then the other two buildings would grow towards, and then you would continue to have the bulk of the bowling alley ball, bowling alley building with something built onto the front. That's, that's the intersection. So, it was, that illustrative plan didn't, didn't make that as much of a, a core as you might think.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I think, again, and I, just to state that I, this first came up, because I was wondering if we should remove that, and I was more concerned with if we did remove it, what controversy or, or conflict might that raise? And if we're not concerned with that?
It's not a matter of whether or not John, who owns the boat building, could do a building close to the road that has active ground floor uses. I mean, he could. The reason for frontage zones is because the market on its own might not necessarily do that, or people might not want to do it, but the vision of the community was that it should happen. That should be what happens. So, I had said previous meetings, you know, you could just think of this as allow, but don't require. If you remove the frontage zones, you still allow it.
Right. It could still be a thing.
You have building types that have commercial, under-residential.
Yeah, and, and that gets to my point of, the, the difference is, you're talking about a five-foot difference...
Yeah, you're talking about...
Close to Route 7, or a 20-foot difference away from Route 7.
Right, and then the occupancy.
And the occupancy.
And that's the bigger one.
And that was the one that affected the CHT proposal.
I think that affects the lower, but they could speak to that.
Right.
The, the other thing to see that affect that proposal is...
Because everyone wants to be 100% versus 75%, right? Am I reading, understand that right? BTZ occupancy of 75% means what exactly?
That means that you're gonna be... You're gonna have 75% of that front area occupied by building. It's gonna create that sense of enclosure.
Right.
So, maybe, I mean, maybe we don't want buildings to line so much of...
That's what this is calling for, basically.
Yeah, but, I mean, maybe, well, I mean, that's maybe what you were responding to in Washington DC, where there were like...
Yeah, I just didn't want to think of a full...
But, but it's not. I think my, my point is, is that you have a flexibility of, in the node zone, it's five to 30 feet is your setback from Route 7. If that were, if that node were taken out, it would be 10 to 50 feet. And every lot along that, in that node or out of that node, they can decide within that flexibility. See, it's not that every single lot that gets built is gonna be 10 feet off Route 7, and you just have that linear block-type feel like you do in DC, or places in Chicago, or in others. So, I mean, it, it's gonna depend on what the, what developers come to the town with. And theoretically, if they come with a site plan, and there's already a, a project that has been built, and let's say that project is 10 feet from Route 7, and the, the DRB sees the site plan, and the next building, immediately next door, also wants to be 10 feet off, then that could be an opportunity to say, well, could we do a setback, or have features that can go, that can alter the look of the front, which these building types allow for? I think that's where that could be handled. But I, I'm good either way, taking it out. I was just worried about what additional work that might require, and how that might delay things, but if it's not a thing...
And, it's until you adopt it, or until you change your minds to something. It's not that big a deal to change three to two and remove the reference to Martindale, or at least for now.
I think that would, especially on a site like this, where it's a, a narrow, deep lot, to say that 75% of the building has to be within 30 feet of the, of the road, of, of the, of the property line, that, that seems restrictive on that shape of a lot.
On that specific lot, and that's why I'm wondering...
And there, there are others, like across the street. They're, they're more deep than they are wide, as well. So they would have that same issue then, too.
So, they typically will be narrower than these.
Yeah. So, by taking that out as a, as a neighborhood center, then we would allow for more flexibility on development there.
Yeah.
Because you'd be down to 50% of the building having to be within that...
So in an effort to...
So, I, you know, I, just, here's just my thought, that I think that...
Anything we can do to encourage redevelopment that is a denser use of the lot, and there's shared parking, and less parking, and, and the buildings are coming closer to the street. I, I really, I'm agnostic about, you know, how close they have to be. I'm not, my expectation is not like that this turns into, you know, Burlington, or, or the, the, the South Burlington city center that's emerging. I mean, I just, I think that's, that's not realistic, and, and it's, it's too, and it's also, you know, Route 7 is, is a major highway. I mean, nobody wants to be that close to the street on Route 7. Those public spaces, the frontages are important in terms of providing some sense of protection from, for people from the, the very, the busy area. So, I, you know, one way we could do it would be to, we could take, stop it from being a node, or we could just revise the, you know, what can happen in a node, and allow more flexibility about how far back the buildings can be, can be located on the lot.
We could allow for housing to go farther back in a node, so the affordable housing could go...
Yeah, or you could distinguish it that way, the how, standalone housing, whatever configuration that is, you know, can, can go further back. And then, you know, if there's commercial, that tends to come closer. I mean, there's a different, a couple of different ways to, to handle it.
One of the, one of the things you could do to simplify the regulating plan is take those setbacks off, and make it agnostic to the built-to-zones, and just leave it in the building-type tables. Because those building-type tables already have those things. So if the idea is, a residential building doesn't have to be as close, you include that in the building type. Just make it based on the building type, and take it off the regulating plan. So if someone wants to do residential, it doesn't have to be as close. If they're going to do commercial, it's going to be closer.
Like that idea?
That seems simplest, doesn't it?
Would that then basically get rid of all the nodes?
Kinda would, yeah. Because if everybody wanted to put housing, then it would all be setback from the road.
By itself, it wouldn't be getting rid of the nodes, because you still have the nodes there saying you want active ground floor use, and you still have the fact that in zones, in those nodes, certain things happen. So, you may want to tweak those as well. But what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing more and more is what sounds like transit-oriented development. And that's, that's really what this quarter calls for. I mean, something that I would like to say is that, you know, what, what do you want? That's ultimately the question for you, to try to figure out what the public wants. What do you want for the uses in the corridor? And then what do you think the future holds? Future probably doesn't hold a lot of potential for retail, the way things are going. And it may not, you know, the bank building in South Burlington, banking is changing. So if you want to try to speculate what the future holds, you can be thinking about setting up the zoning to try to do that. But one thing that's probably safe is housing. And that's what the one, you know, it is a universe of one that's come to you regarding that parcel, but it's talking about housing. And the other form-based zoning application that's currently being reviewed is for housing, and the inquiries are predominantly about housing. That's what people are talking about.
And that particular lot is gonna need exceptions anyway, because even if we make it not a node, having 50% of the built-to-zone on Route 7, I think, still caused a problem, didn't it?
Well, maybe, although if the distance back from Route 7 is great, it may not be as much of a problem.
So, may, perhaps in the interest of getting past page three in, in hour, could we, in 2201 dot 1A, just, we can remove Martindale Road, and then remove it from the map? And this would be part of our proposed package, and the public has an opportunity to comment?
So, pre-reading number two, and we strike Martindale.
Wait a second. Say that again?
Well, it says, it says, "Frontage zones are focused on three signalized intersections." So it would be two signalized intersections at Hullcrust Road and Long Meadow Road.
Right.
And the slippery slope is whether or not you ask yourselves, what's the potential of Long Meadow Road?
Right. And, and again, I mean, the, it was five years ago, but Kate, to your point, when you had neighborhoods coming together and saying, "We want things to be more walkable and connected," that's what was going into this. So, I mean, based on one project that's come through, and, and we were just looking at approving some of, amended changes from Brandy, and now we're shifting things that could theoretically, if those interests are still there and strong, could bring those neighborhood groups back in to say, well, we actually really would like to see our future be this way. But that's a good discussion to have. So, I think if we remove these for now, and we just see what, what happens, we go from there.
I mean, it's, I mean, like I said, the other thing is, it's 500 to 700 feet away from the node, you know? So it's not like, that becomes heavy residential...
Right.
Then they're walkable to that node, right? So...
So, you know, another thing I'm, I'm just remembering from at that time, it was kind of a big deal that there was a, a sort of, a, a food market there. I mean, it's kind of, it's not really so much a grocery store as, as come over convenience store with a deli and then liquor, right? But there, there wasn't, one of the things that was raised at the time was, there, there is nothing between the Village and South Burlington, in, in terms of a place where, you know, somebody could pop in and buy the necessities. And, and so the neighbors were thinking how neat that would be, if that could turn into sort of a little grocery, more of a local grocery shop. Well, now, again, times have changed, and we have Healthy Living coming in. So, it's kinda, again, just, some of the, the anticipated direction hasn't panned out, and other things have emerged. So, I think it's, it's an interesting object lesson for us in trying to, trying to think as flexibly as possible about what we can accommodate. Not just here, but in other places as well.
Yeah. So we'll remove that for now, and keep the conversation going?
Yeah.
So page four, the character districts, and their definitions are intense. Are there any comments on any of those? Then...
So we'll be modifying that, the mixed-use street character districts, and removing that frontage?
The graphic will have to be updated, although...
Okay.
Wait, oh, oh, for the...
Just to remove that little, yeah. To be consistent with what we just did.
Yeah. Yep. All right, so page five? I did not have anything. I know, I did too. I saw you checking yours, and I thought, that's a good idea. Make sure I didn't miss things. Okay, so, then moving on to page six.
I wasn't quite sure which way to...
Yeah.
Put my comments either, I was flipping between.
I just had a, it was a side comment, no change needed now, but in 2202 dot 4E, on the mobile food vendors, reading point number two, it said that the mobile food vendors are encouraged, are in encouraged use. And if I recall back to the mobile food vendor ordinance that went into the regs, it just seemed like it made it, my impression at the time, and this is going back a few, a couple of years anyway, was that it felt pretty tedious. So I, just something to keep in mind, that if we're saying it's an encouraged use, we might want to just take a look at that language at some point, to see how encouraging it really is. And another question under parking garage, parking garage is the first one, just that the ground story of a parking garage must have an active non-parking use, just means that you couldn't have a parking garage where it's 100% a parking garage? Like, you're gonna have some kind of retail, or some kind of use? Okay.
Parking garages aren't the only kind of parking structure, and they're probably the least likely of all parking structures in Shelburne, that would be in Shelburne.
Right.
Just because of their cost.
Yeah, what's the parking, so what's somebody gonna build a parking garage for?
Right.
I mean, is the museum going to build a parking garage? Probably not, but...
Right.
It was one of those elements that came across, you know, these are models, these things.
Well, potentially something like Healthy Living has the space, but if there was something else that big going in, right?
I mean, both of those lots are gonna have a lot of asphalt on them, and that's one of the reasons why they were attracted to that location, because they'll basically be borrowing green space from the land behind, and it's gonna be cheaper, it would be wicked expensive if they were to be building a garage. A garage would be in a place where you had to have the spaces there, but, and the land was so expensive, but the land's not that expensive here. But I'm trying to think of an example, that you've probably walked by a parking garage in a city somewhere where, it's like, oh yeah, you didn't notice until you got past the business, and then you saw where all the cars were going in, oh yeah, that's a parking garage. It's not like you can hide the fact truly that it's a parking lot, you just don't notice it until a little bit later.
Right. And to your point, I don't see a parking garage being a necessity necessarily, but... Okay, so then, 2202A, figure? Okay, so then 2202A, figure.
And I'm not remembering her doing much in the way of changes in these. She reformatted the tables, but.
That wasn't in here.
I don't remember that being a big.
Yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't in the, the red line version. This is things where I had, I mean, I think that there could be some good discussion around what's permitted conditional or, or not. I don't know if that's what we want to do here, because that could get pretty detailed. It was, was this, this was based on the, that whole form-based zoning process, right? As far as uses?
Well, it was a lot of work by the planning commission responding to her initial, actually not to her, to the original team's work. They, they developed drafts and the commission discussed it and there were, there were changes. I think Brandy's scope didn't call for her to, to work on this, so it's, again, formatting. But, but there were meetings where planning commissioners spent time talking about changing Cs to Ps and Ps to Cs or?
And I feel like this is a discussions that could go on for days. Just for an example, and this, these can be future discussions, but so the, like under lodging, a hotel or an inner motel, the ground floor use is not permitted for, say, the sixth, the mixed-use storefront? Which, I get that, if it's supposed to be a storefront, but then are we, were we looking to encourage having a hotel that has a store on the first floor? I mean, to me, if you, I didn't, I don't know if there was a, or if that would have to just be a multipurpose building.
So I think the answer to that is, is that basically the vehicle for hotels or motels is the mixed use. It's building type 10. But there could be a situation where someone has the mixed-use storefront type and it's not going to be the primary draw on the ground floor. But if someone wanted to have a funky, less expensive, less visible hotel, it could occur on the upper floor.
Gotcha.
Again, I think that the primary vehicle for that building type is the, is number 10.
Yeah, that's, yeah, fair. And.
It wouldn't really be a storefront if the hotel was on the ground floor, unless you thought of the hotel as the store.
And, oh, go ahead.
Like Hotel Vermont has head of the woods. I don't know if that would be the example here of when you'd have a storefront beneath the hotel.
Yeah, I don't, that was pre.
And that could be, as long as number 10 covers the idea of just having a hotel. And, and another one as an example is the restaurant bar, unless that's just considered a store. For example, in the general multipurpose building, that would not be a permitted or conditional use. But it would be as a mixed storefront, mixed-use storefront. Hearing myself say this out loud, this is fine. I think I was just.
It's kind of more of a perception of where you'd want.
Overwhelmed.
To, to, yeah, to emerge, you know? Yeah.
Right, because there's building types that are allowed in certain character districts, right?
Are we saying that they can't be in ones that they're not designated as a permitted?
Correct.
Location?
And this is where the bigger picture needs to start coming together, because you have, each character district doesn't allow all of the building types.
Yeah.
So it's.
By that table.
Yeah.
And that's, that's where you see which building types are allowed in which character districts. It's kind of innocuous, and I was actually thinking that it should be some way to make it a little bit more obvious, because it is an important table. It's the second place people go after they say, "Okay, what character district is that land in?" The next thing they have to ask themselves is what building types are allowed?
It's this one here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's the question that would then allow them to determine, "Oh, yeah, I can do what I want in that building type."
And this is really getting into that decision point of, are we looking at having her changes put through so that we can get to a point where we can have deeper conversations? Or do we want to have those conversations now? And it's hard to not have them now. But if we are, then.
Did she make any changes to this?
I don't, there might have been changes. I don't have the red line in my hand, but it wasn't, wasn't the focus of her work.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
The red line thing we got didn't have any.
Didn't have any.
Tables or anything, so it's hard to always match up what you're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, so do we want to, so that's, that table is page seven and eight. I'm sure we'll be spending more time with this document anyway, so good things to think about.
So what, what page are we on now?
Uh, nine.
Oh, nine.
Section 2203.
So the question, is the question, did she change that table on page five? And if so, how? Or is the question, is the table on page five the way you want it to be?
I think it'd be the first one. I think that if it's the way we'd want it to be, that, that gets into deeper conversation that is not going to enable us to get through this in the next two meetings, which is already going to be a challenge. But I am open. I'm not trying to drive and say that it had, we have to just do it this way. I'm, I am certainly open to inputs.
That seems like a bigger discussion.
It really does.
Any subsequent changes to it?
I don't, yeah, I think it's a, a longer discussion, which I didn't at least prepare for that kind of.
Yeah, I didn't either. I, yeah.
I didn't give that kind of in-depth to the things that weren't changed.
So then if we want to move to 2203 on page nine, there was, and Dean, I think you had it in your notes as well, 2203 dot 2C, number two, the building features A, references the section that's not listed.
Right.
And I didn't.
And that should be, actually, building features, did you say 2A or were you 2C?
2A. Well, 2203 dot 2C.
And then building features.
Number two.
Yeah, and actually, that is an incorrect reference. She has section, but I believe what she meant is figure 2203B. Because I checked that out and what, the place where that's shown is, is figure 2203 dot B.
Not dot C?
2203B. No, it's a multi, it's a multi-page table, the 2203B.
Building elements? Yeah. Right, ceilings, balconies.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is B. Okay. So we can add that in?
So on page nine, middle column, first item, building features, then where it says, "As stated in section," it will say, "It's as stated in figure 2203 point B, period."
Are we having flashbacks to the plan yet? In that same center of the page on point I for number two, around accessibility routes and all around the, the complying with ADA, it says, "It may encroach to the extent necessary to perform their proper function." Is it necessary to add in while remaining visually consistent with surroundings or anything like that?
I think what she's recognizing is that there's a, there's a legal requirement. Basically, the courts would say that you'd have to accommodate. And I don't know if aesthetics could be used to deny a request. I mean, when you say the aesthetics are visual, are you thinking that something would have to be said no to or to be designed in a particular way?
I'd be more just to design aesthetic. I mean, there's a difference between if a, if a developer were to say, "Okay, we need a, we need to build a, we need to build a ramp because it's an ADA requirement, so we're just going to put in an aluminum shiny ramp because that satisfies the requirement." But it would stick out and be really, really obvious. Not, not that it's bad to have a ramp, but you would want it to be visually consistent.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, I mean, if, if there's language in the form-based zoning that dictates the design of ramps, generally, wouldn't those also apply? It's just a question of whether or not it would be allowed to encroach.
They would. I, I don't have this embedded in my head.
Yeah, I don't either. And so I was just going to do my search.
We could do like hand types or something.
I'm not sure that it has design.
Yeah, I don't know if it is. And with the development community, I don't know if that's a thing that would happen. I would imagine that if somebody's going to invest in putting a building in place, they'd want it to look good.
It's going to be, I think the situation we may be thinking of is the sort of thing that someone who's a homeowner who has a building in the fall, and they're going to need something for six months or 12 months.
Right.
And then it goes away. But if it's a public building, it's going to have to be a public building requirement. So it wouldn't, wouldn't be some kind of wonky little.
Okay.
And maybe we can also figure that if it's going to be encroaching on the setback, it's going to be foremost in everybody's view. And if somebody's putting a new building there, they might want to make it look good.
Right.
I mean, they probably really would want to make it look good.
One would think, and, and this is just, it's definitely, it seems like it's splitting hairs and it shouldn't be a concern, but I just, given the legal landscape and the way things go.
Sure.
Well, you know, the fact that it's legally required means that it has to be a component in public buildings. And so there's a lot of incentive, there's some really beautiful work being done. And it, and it's, it's increasingly a feature. It's not just for people with, you know, physical disabilities, but it's also, you know, with our aging society and, you know, I don't know, it just, people with strollers and, I mean, it's, it's kind of becoming really normative. So, yeah, I, I wouldn't be that concerned about it. But we could, that could be something we could look at in the future.
Yeah, certainly it doesn't need to be now.
Yeah.
And let's see. Do any of these buildings that are going under the form-based code have to be reviewed by the design review board?
No.
Design review board of the HPDRC has a rule in the form-based zoning when a historic property is at issue. But just a generic site, generic building, no. They don't. That idea had been talked about at one point, but it wasn't incorporated.
I think it'd be great to have that discussion at some point. Whether all new buildings or renovations be reviewed by the HPDRC? I would like to see, you know, that discussion happen, you know, amongst us or whoever. Is that a select board thing or is that?
Would talk about whether or not you want to make it part of the.
In this district or everywhere in town?
I think everywhere in town, yeah.
It'd be interesting to, if that's a future discussion, to see if there's any precedent for that, if other towns have done anything like that.
Townwide? Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm not sure how much of Winuski is covered by a design review, but that's a pretty small-ish and dense and historic. So maybe a good part of that, they have design review and historic preservation review. It, it all flows from a study that identifies the qualities that you're trying to protect through the regs. My guess is that with all the work on the form-based zoning district, it could be justified for that area. I'm not sure that there would be justification for design review in the rural district because what's, it has, there hasn't been a document that spells out, well, what is, what is it that you're trying to accomplish?
So maybe certain, certain areas.
More than now, I guess, is what, is how I see it. There could be more subject to design, design review, but I think there's a pretty fundamental question of whether or not you want to use design review in form-based zoning. And maybe Kate wants to talk about that if, because part of form-based zoning is, is that it should be spelled out in advance and you can submit everything and you don't have to go to as many meetings or be reviewed by as many boards.
So form-based zoning is actually one step beyond design review, because it's, it's, you know, you're really getting into dictating about the physical form in the, the regulations dictate the physical form. So it was one of the reasons why we thought that it would be appropriate, given that we were trying to really revitalize this area and turn it into something that was more recognizably, at least pockets of, something more recognizably urban than just more car-oriented stuff. So, but the place, Stephen, where I think it would be incredibly valuable would be in our growth areas. So like, can you imagine how much more confidence people might have had in the Quinniesaska application if they had an idea of how, you know, there was a predictability about and oversight of how that was going to emerge more than, you know, than there is right now?
Would you call any, what's considered a growth area?
What's that?
What's considered a growth area?
Um, it's.
It's our land uses, we have the village.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, yeah. It's all the areas that are serviced by the sewer service area. So, you know, there's actually considerable amount of land that could be developed.
Okay, anyway, I'd like to see that as a future topic of discussion.
Your proposal is that in the future, there'd be design review of everything, anywhere?
Just where it's appropriate, I guess. Because right now, if it's just for historical structures, then it kind of de-incentivizes developing historical structures, because there's that extra burden of having to, like, save a broken-down building with a tree growing out of the roof, you know? Whereas the other, the green fields, you know, there is, there's no, you know, you can put anything there. You can put a tractor supply or whatever, you know, and it could look however it has to look. But I know places like, well, like Lake Placid, you know, across the lake, it's, it's got design review for whatever. You know, we worked on a price chopper a long time ago that was thoroughly reviewed by design review and it came out so much better because of it.
I like that idea. I think that's really. Yeah, just to echo what Kate was saying, that seemed to me the driving force behind form-based zoning all along was be more prescriptive about this is what we want things to look like upfront.
Yeah. And also a good point to have that.
Well, just something you said, but if form-based doesn't apply, then you have design review.
No, that would be an interesting thing. If you use, because we don't have any timeframe for when this might become the de facto zoning in the corridor, so we could adopt as part of this, that if you don't use form-based zoning, you have to have design review for any project that you do under the conventional zoning.
That idea exploded.
Seven or eight years ago, that board, the, the select board at the time wasn't interested, but maybe this one would be.
This one, I think, would be more amenable to that, because they're, Jamie helped create it and I think there's some interest. Yeah.
I would push to the first form-based zoning.
Yeah.
Well, even if it didn't, it just gives you the outcomes you want regardless of their choice, right? That's the nice part to, I think, is that the outcomes might be more equal in terms of.
More consistent, yeah, in terms of quality.
Quality. Sorry, I cut you off.
No, you're good. I was just going to say, I'm, I'm noting down these types of things. I, I have started a spreadsheet that I'll share at some point where, like, for each meeting we have, I'll, I'll have what we discussed. And then if there's follow-up items or parking lot items sort of things that we want to put on future agendas, and that would be one of them.
Can I ask a, just an aesthetic question of the document? The character, so for example, on page 10, character district is in a blue font?
Does that mean it's a hyperlink?
Well, I mean, there are a lot of them, so like, you flip through, there's, it's like a term of art, basically, a mixed-use storefront or commercial liner storefront. Is that?
So she used. Blue or defined term?
Is it like the first use of that?
So they're the ones that are defined in the back?
Commercial, I'm trying to think about what this was. So character district is colored blue and then things like mixed-use storefront, building types are.
Fronted zones. So at first I thought, oh, it's the first time they're using that term, but then every time it's used, so is it just, is it linked?
The definition, is it?
Is it just so kind of weird formatting?
Well, it's just like, it seems to be key terms, but I just was curious, yeah, in the digital version, does that do something? Is there a way to like? Is there a way to like hover over it and it defines it for you?
I don't think it's hyperlinked because that's the digital version.
I was just curious, I was curious as I was going through it.
Doesn't do it.
Yeah.
So that could be a change, change our blue text to be consistent?
I mean, it just seemed like it was intentional, right? Because it's fronted zones everywhere is used that way, so. Just trying to understand why.
I think, you know, maybe for lack of a better term, they're key phrases that.
Yeah.
Like, remember character districts?
Remember building type?
But if it's distracting, then we.
Yeah, it's not, because it, character district is used, but then it's never just defined.
It may have to do with illustrations. Or things that are in tables.
Yeah.
Let's still make it another blue text.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure, it'd be interesting just to ask her. I'm sure there's an explanation.
Yeah.
Move it on.
Page 10.
Still 10?
Yeah. 23 minutes, 10 pages, it's pretty good. Hour and 45.
To go back to.
Yeah, please.
I mean, it looks like under the 2201 regulating plan general provisions, those, those things are all in blue where they're referred to in these things. And they're all, a characteristic district is a thing, frontage zone is a thing. And then even within its own text, it's referred to in blue when it's part of the text. And build-to-zone, et cetera. I think that's the rhyme and reason of it. It's part of.
Critical element of the code.
Of the regulating plan.
But it's not limited to the regulating plan because some of the things like the building types are.
The what is?
Building, building types are also in blue.
Oh, okay.
We can ask to see if there's.
Yeah, well, we'll straighten that out.
2203 dot four B on page 10, the last text around compatibility of accessory structures. I don't have a problem with this at all. It's just the last thing is materials and colors. And I agree that accessory structure should probably be consistent with the primary structure. I didn't know if having removed materials that we just, we.
I think it's a reflection of what, not the, it's not that there's a prescribed set of materials
or colors. It's that the understanding is that the accessory structure will have those things in common with the principal structure that it's accessory to.
Right, which makes sense to me. I also just realized that I can't read a clock because it is not almost 8:45, so we're still good.
Where did that hour go?
Apparently it's been a long day.
I wonder.
I like how nobody said anything either. Ah, he's just in his own world. Don't worry about it. Okay, so 2203 A on page 11. I think all my comments were more just to point out to myself, not to question.
Yeah, these weren't things that she changed or.
Yeah, there is no change, no changes here. Yeah. I think just reading through build-to-zone occupancy, those types of things, I was trying to relate it back to the Taylor Scott and why, it was just reinforcing in my mind that that's just a really weird lot with the intersection bisecting a narrow lot. So to say that they need to have, if it's in a node, 75% or if it's not, 50% of their front building facade that must be in the build-to-zone, that math would be messed up for anybody that. Yeah. I just think that that's an important concept from a form-based zoning perspective.
So is it down page 11?
Yeah, I believe so. These are also things that she did not. So there is the definition on the right side of that page for story height, that it's measured from the top of the finished floor to the ceiling above. And we had discussed doing floor-to-floor.
That's in one of the tables as well, right?
Yeah, and it's referenced in all the building types. It's all floor-to-ceiling.
Do your earlier question about how stories that. So are you.
Now's the time to discuss whether or not the definition of story would be changed.
Yeah, I'm more, I'm more curious. I mean, I know, and it was a good point that, that he raised and, or Taylor Scott, Tyler Scott raised. It might involve finding all of the places where that's defined. All of the building types have floor-to-ceiling mentioned, but if we were to do that, I feel like that could be a reasonable update to make. So this would be something that would need to change as well.
Yeah. You'd, the, the, the criterion is right now story based on floor-to-ceiling. And if you're changing it from, I think he said membrane to membrane, does that ring anybody's bell? Essentially floor-to-floor above, then you're gonna want to tweak the numbers in the building types.
Which that would, yeah, that would need to happen anyway, and there might be other references to it, but I, yeah, this is one of those things where I don't know how involved that would be. But if we are going to change it now, then this would be one place to make a change.
Well, I assume that this is in there, so when you're looking from the outside, it looks a certain height and you see certain definitions. So the ceiling doesn't necessarily matter unless the windows go all the way up to the ceiling. You're not going to see that from the outside. So it's sort of, maybe the architect can say, like, what's the appropriate way?
I think some of the reason. What's that?
Floor-to-floor makes the most sense.
Right. But I think the reason that it is the way that it is is in part because there are those window requirements so that you don't end up with a window requirement that becomes incompatible with the interior that's going to have this weird thing at the top, which is the start of the floor because the restriction is floor-to-floor rather than floor-to-ceiling that keeps it up.
So we have to change the window.
Well, so there's, there's the potential implication. I think that's something that would have to be explored or your numbers will have to be big enough so that you don't have that conflict. I mean, people aren't going to arbitrarily thicken the floor. So you don't want those story heights to be too low because that's going to drive the floor to the top of the window. You'll see the bottom of the floor to the top of the window, potentially.
And it wasn't until seeing this here, where it's one thing in the building types to say the floor-to-floor measurements need to be a certain height. It's another thing when, what else is driven by that, such as window and transparency?
Because the building types say floor-to-ceiling.
They do, right.
Yeah. So it's pegged to that idea rather than floor-to-floor.
Within the building types, it's easy enough to change the floor-to-ceiling to floor-to-floor. But what else does that impact, I guess is my question.
It's choosing, I think, choosing the additional number of feet that you're going to, because right now, the, the code is agnostic to the thickness of the floor because it's defining, it's defining that area from the floor to the ceiling. Things are flowing from that. So if you're going to go from floor-to-floor, you've got to have some idea of how thick the floor is going to be. And make the number big enough, I guess, to make it work.
Yeah, I think that might be something just to look into. I don't know if there's an established way of referring to this or if there's other, like, what is common within the form-based world? If there are other form-based zones that use floor-to-floor, I'd just be curious if they, like, how they manage the.
I started looking and I don't know that I got any real answers. I can keep looking.
If I remember correctly, the comment wasn't a complaint or concern for their building. Just, he sort of said, as, as we were looking through this, it seemed like something that you might want to fix, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure that there was a specific problem that they had with their building, right.
But it seems like, I mean, we have to make an exception for the top floor because there's no floor above it. But usually it's floor-to-floor and then floor-to-uppermost ceiling.
Well, and that's where membrane or whatever.
Point.
If there's a, an industry term that would represent a separation, because, I mean, even the upper floor would have a ceiling that probably has, I mean, membrane to me is like a waterproofing kind of thing. Like there's a, there's something.
Thermal envelope would be the, the thing that would define the uppermost story.
But if we're talking story height, I mean, it's typically floor-to-floor.
Right. Okay, so we'll note this and as we go through the document, if we see other areas, we can pull that out. So 13.
Which is at the left side of that next bit.
Right.
And that was more of an issue for him.
But those are, yeah, as established in the figure 2203. Yeah, so that's, we can update that there. In the next column over, under outside frontage zone, the floors, the plural is a capital S, which should probably be lowercase.
That was a good catch.
And I don't think it was something she changed. I'm not looking in this part anymore. But the, on page 14, the bulk plane definition, that, I don't think that was anything that she was messing with.
No, that, that had been in the regs before.
Yeah. That was just something I would need to think about because I don't get it. So if we want to move on to page 14? Feel free to call it out. I didn't have any comments on 15 or 16.
I mean, one of the things that got sort of tossed out of the side of the boat was the annotations. If you get far enough, it's like an impressionist painting that the numbers start to emerge. But they don't really. So those should be cleaned up. I'm not sure how tedious it's going to be because I thought they were going to be cleaned up, but that's on the to-do list. I'm just a little afraid that it. Be a good intern project or something.
Right.
That would be a great job for.
An intern sometime.
Took the words out of my mouth.
Yeah.
It's in stereo.
Do you have an intern?
No, not right now, no.
Or somebody's grad challenge. Another idea.
Are they, are those more in the spring or the fall?
Well, they have to start putting their proposals together in the fall. But, I mean, there may be a kid who's sort of doing, you know, computer-aided design.
Probably just bringing them out.
Yeah, yeah, graphic, or wants to learn how to use InDesign or something for. That's how Paul Drayer got everything down up in Newport. He had the high school kids do it.
Brilliant.
I know. And then their parents were super impressed, so it drew them into the public meetings.
Exactly.
It was like such a genius win-win.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yes. Youth engagement for sure. Which, incidentally, the, just to say out loud, and Megan, for your knowledge, the planning commission does have a student seat available. So if there are.
Oh.
Any students available.
For a while.
Yeah. I think he's officially not.
He's retired.
Yeah, he retired. Went out on top. He's done. So anyway, there is an open seat to a student. It's a non-voting seat, but it's an opportunity to get involved and participate in the conversation, which can be good.
That's great.
Age range?
I don't know.
Student.
Is there an age range or just they need to be in kindergarten?
I think some of the theory is that they, the select board or whoever have been behind this have preferred juniors and they could maybe loop and have another year. Or sometimes the boards will have more than one. And that way they'll have a kid that's been on for two years and one that's been on for a year. And that way they can mentor each other, so on.
Yeah. So if there are any future planners out there that anybody knows.
Just for maybe a future discussion, it'd be interesting to advertise that a little at CVU. Maybe we already do, but.
I was just saying, my daughter's about to go to CVU and I made some contact already with Adam Bunting, his principal. Be happy to kind of put that bug in his ear, but.
Or maybe somebody.
But it's only Shelburne kids, right? So it's like.
That's been a topic of discussion, is whether or not it would have to be. I'm trying to think.
If a Williston kid wanted to sit on the Shelburne Planning Commission just to get the experience.
Yeah.
Because they don't have a student.
I think if no other kid presented, the select board might, might appoint him. The select board's been pretty flexible about this. There were, I think, four different kids that wanted to be on the rec committee and I think they had two, and they found a way to get all four of them on.
Right.
Or involved at least, I think. But, yeah, flexible is, I think, how they see it.
I don't really want to turn down students who want to get specifically engaged.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so get into building types. Page 17. As a general theme through this section, the, in several cases, the lot placement diagram has letters on it that are not pointed out in the actual numbers. Like on, on page 17, the detached dwelling, it's G and H. So I don't know if that's an exercise that would be worth pursuing for completeness.
Yeah, well.
Like you have this, you have the, this diagram here that has all these letters. And there's letters throughout the document, but some of them are missing. Actually, H is there. So like in this case, G is not.
There's no G.
There's no G. Like you have A, B, C, D, but no G.
But is there a G?
Yeah, it's this back lot in the diagram.
What I'm saying is that called out in the.
Somewhere.
Or not all pages will have all of them.
Well, this one has.
I don't know, but if this.
This one has a G.
Yeah, if detached dwelling has a G, then there should be a G somewhere on here. Even if it's just a definition.
There's no I either.
That is here. It's a permitted front yard.
Persistent in a lot of them. More than one of these.
That, that and the ground floor finished elevation. And in a lot of them, it's a, it's a zero-foot minimum and a some other number maximum. And the ones that are a zero minimum are fine. So I think the ones that we would just want to be concerned with are the ground floor, anything that's not zero for the minimum. And that kind of gets into, is this more from a design perspective? Or to raise it a little bit from a stormwater perspective, because it's a detached dwelling, it's a house, you want it not flooding? The, the ground floor finished elevation. Right below where you are, where your pen is, the last highlight.
Ground floor.
Character.
Oh, oh, I see.
They're consistent with the character of the building type.
Right.
And so if you're trying to build a particular building type, it would be a little bit higher off the ground than another type. And so that's why the numbers were set the way they were. But it may be that it isn't that important to have that as a standard.
Well, and it's more, I mean, there's a three-foot variation within that. So I, in, in many of the building types, it's, the minimum is zero, the maximum might be two, three, or four. And I don't, I mean, for a detached dwelling, typically you would walk up. And I, I don't, I mean, for a detached dwelling, typically you would walk up steps to get into the house and a one-foot, um, to, to. It's Tyler, not Taylor Scott, right?
Tyler.
To Tyler's point, um, it was a two-foot thing and what that would have to do with the ramp would create a lot of problems.
As a public building, right. Single-family home wouldn't be subject to the public building standard, but apartments would.
Right, I don't think you'd want to get any less than one foot. Just because your, your walls are framed, you know, if you do a slab, they have to stay above the ground in order to not get carpenter ants and stuff. Rock, yeah.
So no real reason to be changing that foot ground floor finished elevation on the single-family building type. But as you're going through to the others, is that, that's what you want to revisit?
Correct. That and this would also be the, uh, even though for the detached dwelling, it's not applicable, but the floor-to-ceiling. If we were to do a floor-to-floor, we'd need to, we'd probably want to be consistent with the language.
Yeah, I mean, those lines, for the single-family, those lines could be struck since there's nothing next to them.
Right, like it's, yeah, that's true. Uh, but I guess you want the consistency because when you're looking at a building type, from a document review perspective, it's handy, at least from my perspective. I'd rather have NAs if they don't apply than.
So we change that to floor-to-floor?
Yeah, I think so.
But I'd keep the upper floor height, floor-to-ceiling.
Okay.
We're still on single-family.
Okay.
Yeah, so, well, and this gets into that discussion, how involved would it be to make a change to floor-to-floor? Like the definition of a story and.
I think if we just swept through and made it consistently changing in these places and then the definition, I think that would probably be pretty easy.
But you're gonna, but you're gonna need to change the number as well because you're taking on added area.
Right.
You were saying we might have to change the window.
Well, I'm just saying that you may want to be thinking about it because that's one of the reasons, that's how I can make it make sense that the standard reads floor-to-ceiling rather than floor-to-floor.
Oh. I think, um, yeah, we're, we ought to take a look at it where it finally says a number.
I think since we're going to be sticking with this document for the next meeting, um, this is a great crash course in all of this. And I think as we're going through it, and it's just things to keep in mind and let's, uh, see what ideas we come up with and thoughts around it.
There's this note above each picture saying, lot placement diagram note, not all features labeled below are subject to corresponding standards left.
Because if you. That was the, that was so we didn't have to go through and edit, but it's still going to be cleaner.
Yeah. Well, I'm just noticing like on the next one, it's even more wonky because there's like a ton of letters and almost none of them are referenced, you know, so.
Things got crossed off the list.
I also think some of them might be wrong. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I noticed that halfway through and this, there was more of an observation, I don't know.
Why is the built-to-zone occupancy highlighted?
Oh, just because those were some things that had been discussed, so I just, I had done this before the last meeting to try to make it a little bit easier when I had it up on the screen and we were talking about some of those things that Tyler had raised.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not highlighted in the original. So for consistency, change ground floor height, floor-to-floor, even though on the single-family, it's going to be NA.
Right.
So you got that. And so floor-to-floor, and then ground floor elevation, that number's not changing. And other than the extraneous G, was there anything else on that one?
Wait, are you, are we're on the townhouse now?
What, are we on the townhouse?
Oh, sorry.
Ready to go to the townhouse, okay?
It's going to be the same thing on that one. Floor-to-floor, um, it's not just G, it's FGHI. And then townhouses again, they're the two-foot, and then not a public building.
Um, townhouses would be considered, well, for state code purposes, that would be considered a public building.
So is there, I mean, should we consider making the minimum a zero there or is there a reason why?
Well, it would be kind of like not the way you'd normally see a townhouse.
Doesn't seem practical to me to do that. I.
To make it zero?
Yeah.
I don't, you, I mean, that's just not really what you'd want to do in a climate like this.
Yeah. It's definitely not, but when we had that conversation, one of the considerations was the two-foot minimum building requirement created problems for that particular.
Because they didn't want to have the ramp in the front. I mean, that's, that, yeah, it would mean having to bring the ramp around to the front because of the, and maybe that's another discussion point. Because the requirements for having the building, having an entrance to the building on the primary street. So they'd be thinking, how do you bring people around? They have to have them chug up the hill from the parking in the back and then take a ramp up. And the ramp's required because it's at least two feet from the ground. The issue was the ramp.
A ramp in the back?
Well, they, I think they were saying that the ramp would have to be in the front.
Isn't it because the front entrance had to be on the main street?
Yeah.
The main street, and so that requires the ramp to be on the primary street.
And they would have, they're talking about having potentially a back entrance and elevator, but also just for people who aren't parking or coming in, you know, like.
Right, you wouldn't want to send the back around.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so townhouses are considered public buildings?
Yeah, you can, a duplex is a public building.
Could we just change it to one foot, like the housing, and then you're still up, but not, it changes the length of the ramp you need?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, the, the building code's going to require that you be at least eight inches up anyway.
Why do we want to be up just for insulation?
Well, it's for, for, you know, stuff's falling off the roof and splashing up. And if, you know, if there's snow or ice or whatever, you're going to flood if you're like right at ground level, if you have a snowbank or something like that. And it rains in January, you know, like, has it ever rained in January? Yeah, like every January. And, um, and so, you know, water builds up and you just want to keep water from going inside the house and flooding the house.
So you have elevated foundation essentially is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also as far as, um, you know, if it's a wood-framed building, uh, like on a, on a slab would be the lowest you could get your wood, um, wall framing. It has to be eight inches above the grade anyway by, by code.
And you do that these days by just making an eight-inch-high slab?
Yeah, well, you have a thickened edge or a foundation wall around it.
Got it.
So, yeah, I wouldn't want us just arbitrarily say, well, two feet sounds high, let's make it one foot because then that's still within the things. I, I want to make sure that we're being consistent with whatever the laws and codes and.
One foot is good.
One foot is good?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, in this case, we change the two to a one for the minimum?
So in the townhouse, two to one, and the question I have before we leave the, we're just going to have a placeholder on what the number of feet minimum is for this newly expanded floor-to-floor height? Because right now, again, it's not, it's not including, it's not accounting for the floor thickness, so.
And I feel like that's something where we just, we need to.
So it's a placeholder thing.
Be creative or, yeah. I don't know that we have enough to, yeah.
What's the architect's safer?
Well, yeah, it depends on the, the type of construction. Because you could have a, a three-foot distance between ceiling and the next floor, or you could have it one foot, you know, if you had a two-by-twelve for your framing. But if you had like, you know, bar joists and dropped ceiling, then that, that can vary. So I don't know, I, I mean.
We're changing it to floor-to-floor, right?
Maybe we don't change to floor-to-floor.
I, that's where it's starting to lean for me, but, uh.
And what was Tyler, Taylor?
Why was that a complicated factor?
Yeah.
I think it's just because he's more accustomed to seeing it in other contexts as floor-to-floor rather than in the form-based code context.
I think this, the way it's written right now, it would ensure a certain amount of spaciousness to the, to the first floor. Which, if we want to encourage that, which seems to make sense, you know, nine foot seems like a good number to make it as a minimum. Whereas some, you know, like a Motel Six, they would, they would have very, very thin floors and they would have very, very low ceilings. And we don't want to encourage that kind of thing. So maybe we do keep it at floor-to-ceiling.
Especially if it creates a domino effect where we have to change ten other measurements.
If we're concerned, yeah.
If we're doing it randomly, not that we would do it randomly.
Right.
So we go back.
I think, yeah. Or, or we could just note this as one of those things that we keep in mind.
But for now, it stays the way that it is, but we note it.
Right. I mean, that, I don't know, it seems to make sense for me.
Just trying to remember what his, his concern was.
I don't think he had a concern. I feel like he just was going through things and as we were having a discussion, he said another thing that I noticed was that it's kind of funny that you do floor-to-ceiling, so you might want to think about it. That's my memory of it. I didn't take, I think, a specific note on that, but.
But from a building design perspective, you're right. I mean, if you're talking floor-to-ceiling, it's to create a design, like the, what you want that building to be. You're, you want a minimum of nine feet from floor to ceiling in this building type. But that doesn't mean that the floors can't be extra thick or whatever, right?
What building type would he be building?
A multifamily, I think.
Yeah.
But it's the same, nine feet and two-foot elevation.
Yeah, his, his concern, he definitely had the concern about the two-foot minimum elevation, but the floor-to-ceiling being nine feet, as long as the inside floor-to-ceiling is nine feet, it could be more, I think it was, you're right, I think it was more just the terminology that he was used to, more of a floor-to-floor. Okay.
Okay, so stays floor-to-ceiling, but ground floor finished elevation drops from two to one in a townhouse? And are we saying the same thing in the, in, uh, multiple?
Yeah, what was that?
Two becomes one?
I would think we would, too. Multifamily building?
That's the one he's looking for, so.
It is, yeah. So we're, so then we also go back to the page twelve, story height would be floor-to-ceiling.
You could just leave that.
Is what we're leaning towards, yeah.
So you're not going to, you're not changing the document with respect to floor-to-ceiling?
Seems currently, yeah. Reserving the right to change our mind three more times.
So page nineteen also brings up the question of the multifamily building and how close it would be to the road. And I don't know if that's too involved of a discussion for this review, but that was one of their concerns. I mean, that's, it's in the other ones, I guess, that we passed by as well, but.
Yeah.
They have to be, they can't be more than thirty feet away from the road here.
Right, though the diagram would make you believe that there's a very low amount of the, of the building has to be within that zone or the building facade.
Yeah.
Whereas the way the code actually reads.
We should bring the code up to what the diagram looks like, don't you think?
Yeah.
Well, the diagram has the roughly, if you take, if you take that. You don't think this length here is fifty percent?
Of the.
This, this, this length here is fifty percent of the width? It's pretty close.
Oh, fifty percent of the lot width?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought it was fifty percent of the, the building facade.
Well, if we measure the facade as the width of that building.
Yeah, yeah, I get it now, yeah.
Okay, so I'm just saying that the graphic isn't that far off from the number. I mean, it, it won't be perfect, but.
Sure.
So you're on page nineteen right now? And would you change the ground floor finished elevation to one foot?
Yeah.
But the built-to-zone, ten min, thirty max is the question that's being discussed by your question, right?
Yeah, I think that was what was raised in the bowling alley one.
If we took, if we took the built-to-zone, um, yeah, if we take the built-to-zone off the map, it'll only be based on the building type. And I guess, you know, if that's something you want to do, that simplifies it and you can address, address it by the building type.
Wait a second, so when you say that, you meant that they're taking a note off the map?
If, if the regulatory plan is changed so that there's no reference to the built-to-zone and it all comes from here, then.
In the node, it's five to thirty, right? So take that out upfront and the only place you ever define.
Is here.
Built-to-zone is by building.
But.
So remove the reference to five to thirty in that frontage area.
I mean, maybe by removing the frontage zone on the north end, we don't want to go there.
Right.
But I'm assuming, and Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming that the, it, the main difference in the nodes is the, is that setback? And the built-to-zone occupancy?
And active ground floor use.
Yeah.
Oh, and active ground floor use.
That's a big part of it.
So maybe it's something we reserve for the larger discussion and address the immediate concerns with a waiver?
How far back would he want to be?
He, I don't think he said.
With all those different things.
I think back far enough for the circulation to work is probably a fair way to put it.
Thirty feet would be enough.
Really, yeah. I mean, really, the, the fact that it's a node took off another twenty feet. So, I mean, if it was not a node, he'd have an extra twenty feet to move it backward?
If he has that twenty feet according to it not being in the node, then the building type he's trying to build specifies. There, I mean, like, is there a discrepancy there?
I think his problem arose from the site condition.
I think we have a discrepancy.
I think with that particular lot, it seemed to be that the road alignment for the entry to the site had to be directly across from the road across the street. And that bisected their lot and provided a hardship on them. So maybe instead of changing everything across the board to, you know, to, to, to take away all of these nodes and things like that and just make it by building type, maybe instead of that, we just allow for that exception to happen. And that's where, like, the flexibility that, Kate, you're talking about, maybe that's where that comes in. Whereas if there's a site condition that prohibits some of these things from happening, that there's a mechanism to take that into account and adjust the, um, the parameters.
Yeah, because that really, that specific lot is just funky. Yeah.
Well, here's a question I have. He wants to build in a, on a mixed-use street, right? On a lot-fronting Shelburne Road, so according to this, twenty-two-hundred-B, his built-to-zone is ten to fifty feet. His built-to-occupancy is fifty percent. But if he wants to build a town, is it townhouse or no?
It's, it's the additional.
Multifamily, then his built-to-zone is ten to thirty and his built-to-zone occupancy is only fifty.
This, this is what.
Yeah, I don't get that, why it's.
This is what accounts for that.
What?
Additional requirements, built-to-zone and minimum setbacks from Shelburne Road identified in that supersede the requirements above. So the fact that it's in that character district in that node supersedes what's on this page.
Just because that building type will end up in many different situations.
Right.
In those other situations, it'll be based on the building type, but it just so happens that because of the built-to, because of the frontage zone, then that controls. So it's not a conflict, it's just a higher standard, and the question would be, do you want it to be a higher standard? And what I hear Stephen saying is, look, keep it as a higher standard, but have some kind of waiver provision. Which I know that Jason's been interested in for that kind of purpose. And waivers unfortunately are the, one of the last sections. And so if you want to skip ahead.
Well, now I can read a clock. The way I thought we were.
You know, you don't wear a watch, that's good for you.
So, yeah, I wonder if we, we wind this up now because I don't think we're going to make it through the rest of the building types on this one. One of the commissioners indicated that they wanted to be done by nine, and I know we lose, uh, yeah.
We have the minutes to approve.
And we have to prove minutes.
Go with some other things.
Got it.
Sorry, let's, let's hold this now. I think a nice thing is that we're going to just pick up this conversation at the next meeting. It's, it's not new stuff. We'll keep this.
So just, just so I understand what, where the conversation is sort of moving towards. We are now thinking instead of leave the, um, the frontage zone and maybe have a waiver? And would it be a waiver for where the road has to? and would it be a waiver for where the road has to connect, and also the setback? I mean, what would be, what are we thinking of in terms of the waivers? Sounds like we'd be asking for two things, right, in this situation?
I think it would, I think it should be by, case-by-case basis that a waiver is, is looked at.
Because in that case, the lot is really weird, in another case, there could be some other consideration.
Yeah, there should be a, there could be a wetland in another spot, which keeps you from doing what you have to do.
Are you, so what I'm wondering about, if in the waiver, I haven't looked at it in a while, but are, are, is there any limit on how many things you can ask for a waiver from, if you go for a waiver?
I think the 2207 discussion is gonna be a good one, because, yeah, to Dean's point, yes, I, I would like to see a better waiver, or more flexibility through waivers, but to Dean's point, I think we need to have a framework, because you can't just say, well, it's just a general discussion, what is the approving authority want to give it? Like, there needs to be some kind of boundaries or considerations.
Okay.
So, all right, so if we pick this up at the next meeting and move on to the approval of the minutes for June 13th, somebody like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Andrew. Second?
Seconded.
Second by Megan, okay. So, discussion. Super minor, but in .6 in the second-to-last paragraph, the last sentence, there's an extra four, F-O-R, would not occur for, at least for five years. My level of appreciation for these notes is extreme, I hate pointing those things out. And, let's see. Trying to orient myself.
So, there's another note in here, too, from Bob Gautier, talking about his concerns about nine-foot ceilings and two-foot ground floor elevation.
Yeah, that was in the email that I had, he had sent earlier.
I mean, the elevation, I get, but the nine-foot ceilings, is that just an economics thing for them, that the smaller they can build it, the tighter they can build it, the more they can...
And I talked with Bob again today.
Yeah.
He's looking ultimately at having his existing motel building be able to qualify as one of the building types if that's necessary for density. So I think part of what Bob's, I think part of Bob's problem is solved by a different change that Brandy developed, which is, how do we deal with already-developed sites? Because it's very, very generous, it basically says that you look at the building and you calculate the density as though it was the building type, and so if that's incorporated, then he doesn't need to say, please consider this the building type, because I need that for the density.
Right.
And so if that's off the table, he'll be happy, but if it wasn't to be accomplished that way, then he would be looking for some flexibility on what was considered the building type, and, you know, if it has to have nine-foot ceilings, geez, could you give a little bit? But I think, again, you're gonna solve his problem.
Because it's already existing without nine-foot ceilings.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was just trying to think, like, all right, if I'm building something, like, obviously the less material you use, the smaller, you know, the more economical the construction would be.
He doesn't want to tear down the building, and he wants, more importantly, he wants it to be usable at the higher density, because he would just convert it to apartments.
Right.
And then that gets into, do we want nine-foot ceilings to be our minimum in general as a design, or as a, as a function for Shelburne? Because there could be arguments for making it less from an energy efficiency perspective, or maybe that was his argument, I'm not sure.
No, I think his argument was that there's a, still life in the building, and he would like the higher density, and having that building considered a multi-family building
Oh, I got you.
Is what, what he wants. He wants to be able to put them in at that higher rate than at the under, underlying zoning rate.
Right.
As far as the ceiling heights, the only thing I can think of that we might want to adjust is the upper-level floors, you know, like a typical house, a lot of times they're built with the second floor having an eight-foot ceiling height, because it's bedrooms and things like that.
Okay. All right, any other comments on the meeting minutes? I did not. All right, all in favor of the approval of the minutes from June 13th?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's approved. Other business? Did you have a comment on the select board hearing?
Well, just a quick, quick mention, the select board, we'll be having the hearing on accessory apartments, and I suspect that the Housing Subcommittee will be represented there, but that's coming up. Then, also, somewhat related, Tyler Scott, Mike Monti, and maybe Jeff Davis or someone from JL Davis will be meeting with the Housing Subcommittee in August to talk about the project.
Oh, good. Okay.
And then one other...
Which project?
To talk about the project that they would like to do on the bowling alley site.
Oh, that, okay, all right, I wasn't sure which one.
What's that date?
That date is, oh, August 5th, whatever the first Monday in August is. Yeah, my phone's in the other room, sorry.
Is the purpose of that just to fill in the Housing Committee, or is there, they're trying to get their feedback on some of this?
I think they're trying to get their feedback, but I think ultimately what they'll be interested in doing is getting the committee's support and, and probably to help with, you know, selling the idea, because the Housing Subcommittee is interested in promoting affordable housing, but then also whatever work they can do to help with zoning changes if those will be necessary. I'm guessing that's part of it. I've got kind of ambiguous answers from Michael when I asked. And one last thing, just as a quick heads-up, the HPDRC had a meeting this morning, one of the things that could be coming, will be coming the commission's way, is we've talked about, there have been discussions in the past about changing the zoning, so it simplified the steps someone went through for design review approval, not that there wouldn't be design review approval, just have to keep in mind that for anything in this district, you have to go to the Design Review Committee, they prepare a recommendation, and it goes to the DRB. That means waiting another week, they have to write a decision, it gets more complicated, there's also a notice requirement when it goes to the DRB. And the DRB never says anything, you know, they always follow the recommendation, so the, the discussion is to change the regs so that for minor projects, an applicant would go to the HPDRC, and the recommendation would go to the person who signs the permit, it would go to REVI or whoever's doing that, instead of the DRB. So it wouldn't have to wait another week, HPDRC would still be involved, if the HPDRC said, no, come back with revised plans, they could still do that, it would just mean that the person didn't have to go to a meeting with the DRB a week later. So they seem receptive to that idea, and so it's something that will be worked up and try to fit it in with one of the things that you warn for hearing at some point.
That's the biggest project that would be under minor...
So the biggest, so anything that has to go to the DRB anyway would go to the DRB. So if something has conditional use review, it would go to the DRB, the HPDRC wouldn't step up. So the idea would be that, oh, if someone had a lot in the village, there aren't too many of them, but let's say they had an empty lot, single-family home, wouldn't need to go to the DRB, it would be handled just by HPDRC. That's probably one of the most significant things that would be reviewed only by them, but things like signs, accessory structure, like a shed, fences, things like that that go to HPDRC and to the DRB, the DRB doesn't want to, they don't want to deal with that.
That, that's good. Anything else there?
That was it, sorry.
Then, I just wanted to, I, I think it's just making an official statement to disband the Energy Subcommittee as a former, formal Subcommittee of the Planning Commission, owing to not being able to, having challenges around being able to get a consistent quorum, and being more focused on wanting to ensure that there is a group that is actively working on helping to prioritize and bring energy matters to our attention, and so I just mostly want to get some, get the ball rolling with that, and this is gonna be the easiest way to do that. So, consider the Energy Subcommittee formally disbanded, but it will still meet, I believe it's, it's either gonna be on the first Monday or Wednesday of the month, and more to come. Next meeting is gonna be on July 15th here, not sure what room yet. And we do have an open seat on this commission and on the Housing Subcommittee, and I'll send something to Front Porch Forum probably next week.
And if, I believe a week or so ago, I updated the schedule, so if you haven't visited the online calendar, please just go do that.
Yeah.
We know, so that we know summer plans, we know Neil's away.
Definitely know Neil's out.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Kate.
Seconded.
Seconded by Stephen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.